Good evening, everyone. This is the Committee of the Home Meeting, City of DeKalb, October 9, 2017. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Here.
Fanouken?
Here.
Markwart?
Here.
Fagan?
Here.
Noriko?
Here.
Verbit?
Here.
Favor? Smith?
Here.
Seven present.
There are no items in this meeting that are also on the regular agenda as specific items, so we'll move right into considerations. If you did not get an agenda, there are some in the foyer outside. If you wish to speak tonight on this item, we would encourage you to fill out a speaker Our consideration tonight is discussion of the STEAM Learning Center Phase II Discussion. Before we turn it over to our Community Development Director, Joellen Charlton, I'd like to just make a few brief remarks in terms of the logistics of tonight's meeting. We did have a request earlier on that a number of folks, including some mothers who have small kids at home and want to get back home before it's too late, I wanted to speak prior to the presentation. I thought it would be proper that we have the presentation first. I'm assured that that is going to last 30 minutes or less, at which time we will then turn it over to public participation prior to discussion, questions, and answers from the city council. With that having been said, Community Development Director, Joellen Charlton.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and members of the community. As the mayor stated, we are here tonight to talk about the STEAM Learning Center and to continue our analysis of its feasibility as a 501(c)(3) entity operating in downtown DeKalb. We have our team from RACIO here tonight and from TWB to provide information about the next steps based on the feedback that we got from the council at our last meeting in June. Before I introduce them, I want to take a few minutes to bring everyone up to speed on where we've been on this project, why it was identified by the council as an important component of a revitalized downtown DeKalb, and why proceeding with this next step is an important one in the city's decision-making process. So let's review a few of the dates from the past. Way back in June of 2016, the council authorized the implementation of a feasibility study to be completed by RACIO Architects to determine whether there was a regional market to support the business model for the STEAM Learning Center. That study also evaluated and summarized the space needs and suggested some alternative development sites for consideration in the downtown area. It also looked at building designs and suggested some potential financial scenarios. The results of that study were presented in February of 2017 and resulted in a recommendation and finding that the project would be a feasible project to pursue. So we got some preliminary feedback from the council and what to do for next steps. In June of 2017, so that was the last council meeting that this project was discussed, we discussed an entire Phase II project, and that was presented to the council. And that project included kind of the bigger next steps in getting to some of the preliminary engineering facts. It's important to note that when this information was being presented to the council, the community had already accepted and approved some pretty major transformational projects for the city of DeKalb, including this cornerstone project, Plaza de Kalb, Sundog, and the Forge Brew Company. These projects were bringing back a renewed interest to DeKalb, and my department started fielding requests from others about possible investments in the downtown area because of the positive publicity we had been receiving in the newspapers. Another example is when we attended a conference earlier this year in Springfield, DeKalb was back on the radar as a place to do business because of these projects and the feedback we were getting from various people. At the same time, however, back at home, because we were spending money on these projects, the community started expressing concerns and wanting more information about how much money we were spending. So we started talking about TIF phase out. What are the potential revenues we have coming in the TIF district, and what would we be spending them on in the future? Your discussion at the June meeting, it became apparent that your comments, that we really needed to start thinking about breaking Phase II down into two parts. So we're coming back to you with Phase II-A. And really, it's a really good recommendation that the council made because really they're asking this question, and that is whether there is enough funding capacity from local and national private and philanthropic organizations to support the capital development of this facility. This was a great recommendation. With all of the donor fatigue and everything else that was going on in the community, we really needed to stop and determine whether there was enough funding capacity to support this project before moving on. So before I move forward, I wanted to ask you to keep a few details in mind as we hear the presentation from our consultants. STEAM is not something that's new to the community. We don't have to wonder whether it's going to be successful. It's here, and it is successful. What does this mean economically? If we look at the numbers, we can see a few things. The P-20 Engagement Center for NIU brings more than 14,000 community members into the program. This is important because this is over 30% of our population. The program also has more than 1,600 NIU students, more than 4,000 teachers and professors, and all of those people come together to bring to us more than 31,000 students and several hundred international students who come and enjoy the facilities offered by the P-20 Engagement Center. One of the other positive aspects of this project is that we're proposing it to be used for a museum for the firefighter artifacts that are available in our community that don't currently have a place to be located. One of the other things I want to draw attention to is a letter that you have in your packet from Bloomington, Indiana Mayor John Hamilton, and he's singing the praises of their Wonderlab facility in their community. That project was completed in 2003, and it has had a significant positive impact on their economy in the downtown TIF district. One of the great things that you're going to learn tonight, that as successful as that project is for Bloomington, Indiana, is that DeKalb is positioned to be even more successful than that project. Also asking you to not lose the sight of the vision of the 2025 strategic plan. I know $100,000 is a lot of money to spend on a project right now, especially when we're looking at all of the other options available to us, but it's really only 1% of a potential $10 million project. So I want to keep that in mind. STEAM is one of those original visions that created what I've often heard referred to as the personal trifecta for downtown DeKalb. And what that is, is the Egyptian Theater, the library, and STEAM, all working together to make a successful downtown. Why are these uses important? They bring people. They bring people into your downtown. They bring your residents and give them a reason to experience the downtown and spend money. They also bring visitors, and they provide lots of experiences that act as a catalyst to people wanting to live and work downtown, which is so important into attracting the millennials to the community. We can only go so far with the type of new development now happening in downtown DeKalb. We need to create a market. So for all of the Plaza de Kalbs and cornerstone projects, we can only bring so many of them before we need to also look at the market that supports those projects. Bloomington, Indiana experienced more than $50 million in residential, hotel, and commercial development as a result of the Wonderlab project coming to town. So approval of this next phase is not approval to move forward. Instead, it's approval to go and look at the next steps and to determine whether this is an economically feasible project and whether we can actually start to bring the type of money that will be necessary into the program through donations. This presentation tonight is being provided for informational purposes, so the team that I'm going to introduce here shortly is going to tell you about this proposal, and it's being presented prior to bringing it back to the next council meeting for formal consideration. So before I steal any more thunder from our presenters tonight, I'd like to introduce to you our team. I'm going to ask Craig Smith to come up from RACIO, who's going to introduce his team and move through the project. After that, we'll have some time for questions from the community and then the council.
Thank you. See if we can get, there we go. Well, thank you very much for having us here today. This is an exciting, exciting time. As Joellen mentioned, we've been working on this since June of last year, and the STEAM project has been an exciting one for our entire team. So first, let me just introduce, I'm the principal in charge of the project for RACIO. Sarah Wood is our project director, and some of you have seen her and heard her at past meetings. Matt Roof is our economic development specialist. He's going to be, again, giving a little summary and history of the economics of the project to refresh our memories this evening, and also to talk, Matt's been involved with Indiana economic development for a long time and is familiar with the Bloomington, Indiana market and that situation, so we'll learn more about how that relates to the STEAM Center. And then Nora Keiger is our representative from Tremolyn, Watkins, and Brandt, and we've brought them on the, TWB is their acronym, and we brought them on this, our team, because of their expertise in fundraising for similar not-for-profit ventures all over the country. Everyone on their team, Nora's team, has over two decades, I think, of experience either working in not-for-profit organizations, raising funds, or as an independent consultant. So they're bringing the expertise, and Nora will present that to us tonight in terms of how we understand if there is, because really, the bottom line is that we need to understand if there is the ability to raise money so this center can be independent, not be a drain on the city, but actually be an asset to the city and add resources to the community. And they have many ways, and she'll explain how they understand the feasibility of that. So tonight, again, we'll give you a little recap and history of the project. As was mentioned, this project is not going to be a City of DeKalb project. It's going to be an independently operated 501(c)(3) entity that'll be independent. We'll have a separate governing body that will be formed with representatives from the city, from different constituencies, NIU, the P-20 group, and others to operate and run the center. So we'll do a little understanding of the history of that and look at the potential ways that this has been successful in other communities. RACIO works around the Midwest and many university communities, and we've seen how these kinds of projects can really be an economic asset and drive development in communities and not be a liability, but instead be an asset to the community. And so with that, I am going to introduce, have Sarah come up, and she's going to give us a little recap, just so we remember the mission of the project and the goals of our project.
So Craig just talked through our agenda. And as Joellen mentioned, RACIO conducted the kind of first part of this feasibility study back in 2016, and presented and released the kind of final report back in February of 2017. And through those investigations and research, we discovered that the STEAM Learning Center in downtown DeKalb is not only feasible, but will serve as a catalyst for creating a sense of place. And from an economic impact perspective, it has the potential to stimulate new growth and development, and we're seeing some of this development already occurring in downtown DeKalb, as Joellen mentioned as well. And we feel that the STEAM Learning Center will help tie some of this development together, strengthen existing businesses, and bring new life to downtown. We worked with the community, with the working group, and stakeholders to identify the STEAM Learning Center's mission and vision for this organization and for this project. And I will, I'll just briefly read the mission for everyone's sake. "The DeKalb STEAM Learning Center inspires, engages, and educates today's youth and lifelong learners through the exploration of STEAM principles and the city's legacy of innovation while providing a positive and unique asset in the DeKalb community and region." So the vision, we have several different vision statements, and I'll just briefly go through kind of the key aspects of really what we've extracted through this process thus far. The first thing is really to serve, to connect the schools and universities, artists and innovators, and bring this large pool of talent and resources together to strengthen and build upon. To provide hands-on, interactive learning experiences. To extend beyond the classroom. So to supplement and to complement school curriculum that already exists in the school districts today. To expand boundaries of knowledge using STEAM principles. As Joellen mentioned, these STEAM principles are not new concepts to the city of DeKalb, and these principles will help develop problem-solving skills and critical thinking skills, and these skills are more and more often looked by employers for today's world. To serve as an anchor for downtown DeKalb. And this includes creating a stronger connection between NIU and the downtown, strengthening and revitalizing existing organizations that exist throughout the community, and then creating that cultural, civic, and educational triangle between the Egyptian Theater, between the DeKalb Public Library, and the STEAM Learning Center. And then lastly, to foster constant progress and future innovation, all while celebrating our rich history of downtown DeKalb and the region. So a key component to this initial feasibility study that we did last year was studying the economic impacts that this STEAM Learning Center might be able to have on the region. And I'm going to invite Matt here to discuss what we learned, both specific to the DeKalb region, as well as what we've seen in other communities such as Bloomington, Indiana.
Thank you, Sarah. I'll step through this fairly quickly so we can, close to the mayor's wish to get done in a half hour. We have a large regional context with DeKalb and the western suburbs of Chicago. This gives you a great opportunity in the marketplace. You also have a very strong workforce on the I-88 corridor. So you have sort of some markets that are unique to DeKalb that other cities don't have, and you have strengths in the scale of the market that you're with. If we compare that and look at Bloomington and the Wonderlab, Bloomington expanded in 2003. The city of Bloomington does not put any yearly operating funds into the Wonderlab budget. My understanding at the time, in 2003, when they built the Wonderlab facility, the building that they're currently in, the city was on the path of redeveloping sort of the southwest side of the downtown of Bloomington, Indiana. A lot of industrial buildings, different uses, and the city was in the process of acquiring real estate, remediating the brownfields. And my understanding is they acted somewhat similar to, as the city of DeKalb is, as sort of the coordinator of the program, and reached out and created a partnership with the Learning Center. They did help in terms of transaction of real estate with that project, but they have not, on a yearly basis, provided any ongoing operating. They certainly do clean up after festivals and events, stuff that cities do, but they do not provide ongoing. I think they've also, from time to time, provided their capacity as a public agency for federal grants and state grants, so things that might be unique. So other than that, there's no money coming directly year to year from the city of Bloomington for operation. Just a real quick comparison of the two regions. Indiana University is a major research university. It's much larger than Northern Illinois University. It is a world-class research university. Northern Illinois has longstanding engineering and science fields. They have a STEAM program at Northern Illinois University, really one of the top rate in the country. The difference is you've got a larger university in Bloomington, but the difference is you have a larger market. So these quick seven economic indicators show the scale of the market. So in the feasibility analysis, the test now will be determine how much can be raised because we know the city's not in a position and doesn't want to be in a position to underwrite long-term the operation of the STEAM Center, and they don't have the resources to build it, nor should you. The difference between this facility and the Egyptian Theater and the library is that this facility is at the core of corporate America's need for workforce and research for the future. This is their pipeline for the future. I know it's, you may not think of yourself that way, but this city is one of the pieces of the puzzle for the I-88 corridor and growing your own economic development, not just here in downtown and redevelopment, but really as a partner for the I-88 corridor. Got to think out 10, 20, 30 years ahead. So I think what Nora's going to touch on, and I'll, I think that's probably my last slide, the economic benefits, you've seen the letter from the mayor of Bloomington. It was a catalyst in that particular part of downtown, and the city played a key role, much as the city of DeKalb is playing a role right now, setting the stage for the project. But it's not invested year in, year out in the operation. That's the important thing to take away. And I'm going to turn it over to Nora. Again, I think she'll speak to the fact that really it's a different market, some overlap with some other, but really, we're talking about a major corporate and research market that we need to test and find out. Nora?
Thank you very much. Yes, our firm, Tremolyn, Watkins, and Brandt, has been engaged as the consultant within this project, if it goes forward, to do the philanthropic feasibility study. We've done the economic feasibility, and now we need to know, is there philanthropic interest in this project? So that's what we're going to be doing. So, and as Joellen said, that our goal is to evaluate whether there is potential philanthropic support for the STEAM Center amongst corporations, foundations, and individuals. Our instincts tell us there should be very strong support from corporations, especially as Matt mentioned, along the I-88 corridor, but we want to test that. We also think there would be support from foundations because STEAM learning is very important, it's a very important movement right now in education, and there may be foundations who are interested regionally and nationally in supporting this kind of work. So we haven't done the investigation yet, but we think there should be some. And we do believe that there will be some individuals. We want to talk to some individuals who maybe were not supporters of the public, the library or the Egyptian Center, but either they really care about education, or they really care about economic development in DeKalb. So we're going to be talking to all of those people. The outcome of our study, to sort of underline what Craig is saying, is that this, our study is to help sort of cage the, you know, restrain the risks of the operation, because we will come back, and we've had to do this not many times, but once in a while, we've had to come back to a client and say, we really don't think you can do this. We don't think the interest is there. We don't think the timing is right or something. So that's one thing. If we find that there isn't sufficient philanthropic support, we will say that. We will not just figure out how to do it on the fly. So that's a very important distinction of what this part of the project is. So we'll first of all have sort of a go, no-go recommendation, and then assuming the recommendation is yes, we can do this, our job is to set out the optimal plan for how do you move forward with the 501(c)(3), with the partnerships to actually make this work as a fundraising endeavor, and to raise the money. So our approach includes five sort of basic activities. They do overlap, some of them. One is, we are not from DeKalb, I'll have, you know, admit that, so we need to incorporate some local knowledge to help us identify who the potential donors might be. So what we want to do is work with the current stakeholders in the working group to invite a few other people who may have contacts, business people, civic leaders, who will specifically already have knowledge of, you know, this company should actually be really interested, and I know the people there. So that's sort of the shortcut to getting to people. We will also supplement that with our own research, but it really is helpful in terms of moving things along if we get some local leaders in as part of this. We're going to need to create the materials that tell this story to the people we interview, corporations, et cetera. And we've got the goal, we've got the vision and the mission statement, but we need to be able to make it real in a way people understand, if I'm going to put my money in it, what's it going to be? So it needs to get to a slightly different level of detail than where it is now. We're going to identify 45 to 50 donors. And again, when I say donors, it's easy to just think of individuals, but try to think of corporations, foundations, and individuals as well, for us to try to interview in the feasibility study. So that's how we, part of how we assess the capacity. Through their interview process, we're going to assess the interest and the capacity of people and institutions and companies to support this kind of a project. So that's done through our interviews. And then, as I think Craig mentioned, all of, myself and Heidi Waldner Pepper, who would be the team member, we both have been senior fundraisers within institutions, and we've also had a lot of experience as consultants. So we combine those points of view because we know what it's like to actually try to do this. We're not just saying from the outside what we think. So then we would come together and put together a plan. So I'll sort of walk through this. I've already talked a little bit about partnering with fundraising, developing sort of the advisory group, and, you know, Matt's saying this, but we really believe that, we've seen that corporations, I worked at a university prior to going into consulting and doing a lot of work with corporations, they fund things that will bring them workers, bring them staff and train people. There's a very direct, there's a very one-to-one correlation in terms of sizable giving, is if an institution or something, a company feels is helping to create the kind of employees and the kind of people they need to work with in the future, that's a very, very strong case, which is, and I sort of liken this, even though it's K through 12, it's still building those same skill sets. So that's, we're expecting to look, identify those things, the individuals who support STEAM education because they think it's the right thing, and they think it's important for the children of the region, or to help the economic development, foundations, as I mentioned, who are supporting of this. And because we have the firefighters' museum, there is also a component of people who may, they think the STEAM Center is a great idea, but what they really want is to see someplace for the firefighter artifacts. So we also have a civic kind of component in there as well. So we're going to, you know, try to sort of think of people who, institutions or corporations that would fit all of those categories. As I mentioned, we're also going to conduct additional research of our own on a national and regional level, so we will supplement the list that's generated by our working group and our advisory group and create a bigger list out of that. We are also going to work on identifying potential government sources, both state and national. They won't be involved in the interview process because it's not useful, but we, as part of our work in terms of ascertaining how much, you know, potential funding is there, we're going to look at those sources too. So they'll be part of our final assessment of the possibilities. So the, and as I mentioned, one of our important tasks is really creating the materials to effectively share the project with the interviewees. So RACIO has done a lot, and the working team has done a lot of work already in terms of developing drawings and things that will help, if I'm sitting there, help an interviewee really get a sense, a tangible sense of what that's going to look like, so we're in a very good position. We're not starting from scratch. But we also need to take it one step further, both in terms of specificity, because people want to know, well, what's this, how many rooms are there going to be, and where's the gallery going to be, and where's the wake maker space going to be? So we need to be able to actually tell that. And also, especially for corporations, we need to have a very, very high-quality materials because they will, especially since the organization, our 501(c)(3) doesn't exist yet, we need to be very clear about what it's going to accomplish, how we're going to do it, and to be as professional as possible. So that's, sometimes we don't need that level. We actually want kind of a homegrown sort of look, but when you're talking to a corporation, you don't want that at all. It needs to be very, very high quality. And we also believe that actually we'll probably end up with two versions of whatever these materials are, because with the corporations, we're going to want to really focus about the workforce and education of the future workforce, and for individuals and foundations, we may want to focus more on the economic development and then the children, the families of the region, sort of a regional case versus a broader case. And I think I, Matt mentioned this, but the, you know, as part of this case, we do, we know that there's concern about donor fatigue, and we'll, in testing this, we'll find out, but our, from our experience, the things that have been raised for the projects are very different kinds of projects, so we think that we're going to get different So, we think that we're going to get different responses. But if we do find there's donor fatigue, we have to make sure there's enough non-local donors to make it to compensate for that. So, we don't expect that to be true, but we may find out that it is. So, the way we assess philanthropic potential, it's kind of a art and science sort of situation. One is, we've done research prior to meeting with anyone or any company. So, we understand what their history is, what they've given to other things, that sort of thing. So, we go in with an idea of their, you know, interests. There's one thing about having a capacity to make a gift. There's another thing about being interested in the actual project. And then the third thing is, are you inclined to give any gifts to anybody? So, you really need to ascertain sort of where each prospect is in all of those areas. So, we will be conducting interviews with, confidential interviews with up to 35 prospects, and we're, ideally, they would be evenly split between corporations, foundations, and individuals. The foundations might be smaller, but we want to have representation from all of those three groups. We'll talk to them about the case. We'll use the different materials depending on sort of what their, their own personal goals are, to understand, does this really get them excited? Does it resonate with them? Would it go to a top of a priority list, or does it just fall somewhere in the middle? So, we want to figure that out. You know, is there an issue with timing? This is mostly, you know, with corporations, it could be they do a funding cycle. So, where are they and how do they make their decisions? Sometimes money comes from a marketing budget. Other times it comes from a foundation, and each one of those sources have different processes for getting the money. And then individuals, maybe they just made a pledge to NIU or something, and so we need to understand where they are in their own giving. And then we will want to, we will directly explore what the potential is for them actually making a gift. They'll understand what size gifts we're looking for. We'll ask them specifically whether they might consider a gift of $100,000 or whatever it is, depending on our research of what we think might be a good target for them. And it's confidential, so they can let us know what they're thinking. And it's a way we actually get some, but some hard numbers. I mean, they're loose numbers, but they're hard numbers because they're saying it to us and they don't know us. So, it's not their actual answer. If somebody were to ask them for money who they actually knew, it would be a different relationship. But it's a way for us to get very specific and not just have kind of an anecdotal, subjective sort of response. And, you know, we'll get feedback. We'll find out, are there, you know, one of the things we're assuming is that the people involved in the project are, are people that other people trust, organizations trust. So, when they hear that, you know, when they hear that the mayor of Bloomington has endorsed this, or when they hear that, you know, the NIU P-20 group is, you know, part of the staffing, is that going to, we think that will make them feel confident, even though we don't have the actual organization yet. But we need to understand whether it does or whether it doesn't. And we'll want to help identify campaign volunteers, and almost 99% of the time, people we end up interviewing end up being great potential volunteers, and you can discover in those conversations that they want to and that they would be good. So, we hope to have all of those things come out of that. And then, developing the optimal strategy. So, once we've gathered the interviews, we've had the conversations, we've done research, we know the results, and just assuming that it's positive, then we would develop an outline, a plan for how we think the campaign should be conducted. And they would, they include these six, six main items. The messages for each sector, as I mentioned, we're going to be testing those and seeing what really makes a difference to people that, in the STEAM Center, which part really motivates them. If we have, you know, pre-K, is that really, you know, for a specific foundation, that might be their hot button. That's what they care about. And so, we want to make sure we understand that and how much of it is just that one thing, or is it really a universal sort of hot button? So, we want to figure that out. We want to be, we'll be able to come back and say that, we're not going to come back to the, to the group and say, "This company is going to give this much money. This person's going to give this much money," because it is confidential. Well, we will be able to come out back and say, "We think that from the corporate sector, there's this kind of potential based on our conversations," and based, from the foundations and from individuals. So, our goal is to come back with those buckets to give an idea of where the support is for the project and where, what, where our challenges might be. Timing and possible phasing. So, this is one of the things that can come up is depending on the goal, we may find there's not, you know, because it could be, well, we're not an institution yet, but we still think there's $12 million worth of potential giving. So, we might say, "Can we divide this project into two phases? One smaller phase where you've got the institution, you're raising that money, you get some track record, and then you go into the next phase?" So, that we would come back, if we find something like that, we would come back with a recommendation of how to adjust the project timing for that. You know, what kind of volunteer structure should we be using? Who should be on it? What's the best way to engage people in the project? Nobody, because this is a new center, even though we've got a lot of programming that's already happened, people are going to need to be educated about, people, corporations and foundations are all going to need to be educated about the project before they are comfortable giving a gift. So, we need to understand what's the best way to engage all those types in, in the project. And we'll be working with Ratio to help identify, they're going to be looking, working on the 501(c)(3) structure, but our role is, what kind of fundraising structure do we need? Because even if we have volunteers, we need staff to help drive the volunteers. It's very challenging if it's just all volunteers and we have no administrative support and things like that. So, we'll be making those recommendations as to the optimal strategy. And then, lastly, here's just some information on us. We're, as Craig said, all of our consultants were all senior, so we're a little older, but, but we have at least 20 years' experience apiece, and we do, we're generalists. We serve a wide range of organizations because we feel that that helps us stay smarter because we don't get pigeonholed into one type of sector, so we only see that and we don't learn other things that could, might be applicable. We think of this as, you know, Wonder Lab was a STEAM-related project, but that was also an organization that already existed, and it was a big investment by the city. But it, so in terms of this project, the content is same, but this is like a startup project, really. So, and we have done other ones like that. We, we're working right now with a group in Dickinson, North Dakota, to raise $100 million for a Theodore Roosevelt Presidential Library. If anybody's interested, just let me know. So, in that case, there's no organization. It's the same thing. It's putting something together and, and taking that out. Great cause, great case, but we still need to have the structure, and we need to test how that's going to work. Our campaigns range anywhere from $500,000 to a half a billion dollars. And as I said, we did do the initial council, which was the feasibility study similar to this, and then just initial planning for the campaign. We weren't the council through the campaign. We just did the front-up. That's it.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Prior to moving on to input with participation from the public, Joellen, do you have any final comments?
Why don't we let the public talk, and then I'll see if there's anything to close at the end.
Okay, this is the lay of the land. What we're going to do is to go in the order of the folks who came in and gave the speaker request forms to our city clerk, Sue Herman. If you have not done that yet, please give that to her, and we'll, we'll put your sheet at the bottom of the pile. Our first speaker this evening is Dr. Federico Scaia Morella.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity here to speak. I will also try to be very brief, but I think these two words right here, opportunity in innovation, speak all about what the city is. And I think providing this opportunity for innovation to happen here in the city of DeKalb is just an outstanding way. I have a lot of experience in advanced manufacturing and have traveled the world and seen what other countries and cities have done with this and how exciting and the opportunities there are. And I really feel that having something like this in DeKalb will, will put us on the map. And not only that, but outside of being involved in the faculty here, I have tons of students working in my space, maker space that we've just developed, that are looking for opportunities outside, and I think this would be a great attraction for student engagement and opportunities. We sit on, as spoken in this metropolitan area, with several thousand manufacturing companies that are looking for ideas and opportunities, and this is the kind of center that can really bring that forth. Also, there was mentioned about workforce development, many opportunities through the national networks of manufacturing innovation institutes that are looking for facilities for workforce development for that next generation, and the current generation, and those that are still around that want to do, to retool themselves. So, I think this is a win-win for all, and I'm strongly in support, and I've spoken to Patty and all that group. And whatever I can do personally outside of the university, I'd, I'd be more than happy to support it because I think it's a great cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scaia Morella. Our next speaker, Duane Brown. I know Duane would not violate this, but try to stay within the three-minute limitation. We have a number of speakers tonight.
Hi. 90% of the time, I do. Uh, Duane Brown, fourth ward. When is the council going to determine the STEAM Learning Center is not feasible? The first proposal for STEAM was earlier this year, June 12th, or excuse me, the first proposal was June 12th, 2016. The council needs to stop this now. I don't believe the fiscal impact that they presented for Bloomington, Indiana. I don't believe that at all. The feasibility study was not to exceed $75,000. The proposed construction budget is $12 to $13 million. The Phase II-A fixed tax fees are as follows. Ratio project management, $29,000. Program refinement, $10,000. Fundraising consultant and study, $45,000. Fundraising collateral, $22,000, for a total of $106,000. Design services are $215 to $235 per hour for principal partners, and $190 to $235 for the principal. The fee for philanthropic feasibility study will range between $6,000 to $12,000 per month. I have a quote here. "A STEAM Learning Center would be DeKalb's reputation as a place for innovation and education, as well as attract public and private investment." Unquote. Doug Baker, former NIU president, who walked away with a golden parachute of over $600,000 plus benefits. How reassuring is that for the public? The STEAM Learning Center would require $4 million in TIF funds and eight to nine million in philanthropic donations. The only way I would support the STEAM Learning Center would be if all $12 to $13 million in construction costs were paid for by philanthropic donors, and that a separate 501(c) be formed to manage, sustain, and grow the enterprise over time, and that all expenses incurred, that the city incurred, would be reimbursed through donations, which probably won't happen. There was a three-hour committee of the whole meeting on STEAM earlier this year, on June 1st. At this meeting, a STEAM educator from NIU engineering department said, "This is not the type project the department would be jumping for joy over." The assistant city manager, who is the point person on this and this project, did most of the cheerleading for it. However, I didn't feel a cheer was, would be appropriate. I have one that I've created. It's more appropriate. Ra, 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 sis boom bah, $4 million goes way too far. I want to dedicate a song to the city staff. It's, it's the old Andy Williams classic, "Dream the Impossible Dream." I want to ask the council, council to cut all funding for this project now. We can't afford this. I mentioned that at the earlier June meeting. Nothing has changed. And I don't know where they get the support for this. I mean, sure, not the taxpayers. I mean, I see the small group, the city staff, a few NIU people, the city, the city taxpayers don't support this. This is not feasible. Kill this now. Thank you.
Thank you, Duane. Our next speaker is John Anderson. Andy? As the speakers come forward, please identify yourself.
John Anderson, fourth ward. Hi, John. Well, I don't believe right now if they could scrape up all this cash to build this thing that they could, the city could even afford to hire a janitor for it. We've got a poverty level in DeKalb of 60%. We've got no funding, no revenue stream for new vehicles, no revenue stream for maintaining the streets properly. So, where are they going to get money to even pay a janitor to do this? Now, this, you know, if this happened 130 years ago, when we had, we had some real philanthropists here in town, in fact, they, all three of them built a grade school. I don't know, I know Mr. Hase built, or Glidden built the hospital. Mr. Hase built what's, well, it was Barb City Manor. Those people are gone. You don't have that kind of money floating around. Of course, this was all before we even had income tax in this country. But there's just so many things that the city needs to do. Like I say, they couldn't afford to hire a janitor and pay him. So, you gotta, you gotta start listening to the people. We just don't have the money, and we're, we're overtaxed as it is. So, I, I just don't think, I think like, like our previous speaker, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put any more money in. How much money and staff time has been spent on this over, over the last few years? Thank you.
Thank you, John. Our next speaker is Michaela Holtz.
It's my pleasure to be here, and my name is Michaela Holtz, and I'd like to speak in regards of the STEAM Learning Center. I'm here to join others, to encourage you and ask you for support as you decide the next step in STEAM Learning Center development. The feasibility study and some of the other speakers already talked to numerous benefits of STEAM Learning Center here in town, from innovating and welcoming space to provide place for learning, space where innovation can happen and problems can get solved, place for collaboration, place for local businesses to draw visitors from entire region, from Northern Illinois University, a place that would actually maybe attract our next new neighbor who would advise move to suburbs, place we can brag about. I think we need something like that in DeKalb. But I'm here today mainly as a new mom. As a new mom, I have a six-month-old son, I worry. New moms, or all the moms, I guess, do. And I worry about many things, which I don't have to cover for this six-month-old stage, but I want to make sure that I ensure that my son grows up to be a kind person. I want to make sure that he is prepared to be living in a world we don't really know yet. How is he going, how am I going to raise a smart, confident, yet empathetic and open-minded man? I know that he'll need to be a critical thinker. I know he'll need to know how to solve problems, and he'll need to be curious and ask lots of questions about the facts that are thrown at him. I know he will need to learn from a very young age that it's very important to learn, and that we learn the best when we work with others. And I know that those are lofty goals. I'm aware of that. But I do truly believe that a LE, STEAM Learning Center will actually help me to, to get there. Why it should be in our downtown? I'm a full-time working mom. I have to be extremely efficient and creative with my time. And I imagine when a city is deciding about how to spend their funds, they have to be extremely efficient and creative, right? I believe that if it's downtown, it makes the most sense. It's practical. From my point of view as a mom, it allows me to park a car in one place and take my child to a library, to a STEAM Learning Center, and to maybe have a dinner with my husband in downtown. It may be simple, but it's extremely important when you are on a low time. So, because I'm here tonight, that also, just, I just want to see, just want to let you know how it shows that I'm truly invested, and I believe that this is a great cause, and that's why I chose to actually leave my son and husband at home and come here. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. Good night. Good night.
Alderman Fagan reminded me that we're going to try to stay within three minutes. That was 2 minutes 56 seconds point 86. She was right on it. Thank you, Michaela.
I wanted to make sure that they stayed where they live.
Oh, okay. Where they stay where they, I thought you think, stay within the limit.
No.
Okay. Sorry. Well, anyway, that was 2 minutes 56 seconds. Thank you, Michaela. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Okay. But yes, Mr. Fagan and Alderman Fagan announced that, or asked that we, the folks do identify themselves where they live. Michaela lives at 513 South 1st Street in DeKalb. Okay, Jenny Jeep Johnson. You know the routine here, Jenny. You've been here a few times. Please state who you are and where you live.
It's a little different being on this side, though. My name's Jenny Jeep Johnson. I'm at 304 South 7th Street in DeKalb and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As the former city clerk, I have had the opportunity to hear about the STEAM Center from its first presentation and I remain as enthusiastic in its support now as I was back then. As a mother, I am thrilled with the idea of having a place to spend the day with my family, right here in town, without having to travel. I think you'd be surprised at the number of families who frequently travel to Kane and DuPage and Cook, sometimes even as far as Lake, and hold memberships even at different organizations out of town because we don't have anything like that here. So that would be thrilling. As a taxpayer, I can certainly appreciate the philosophical debate around the existence of TIF as public policy. But we have one and it's expiring and as a resident within the TIF district, I believe this is exactly the kind of one-time capital expenditure that TIF was created for. One that will not only have an immediate impact by the presence of the STEAM Center, but the ongoing benefit that can spur development and bring some tax, or bring some dollars from outside of our community into it, the way we're currently having, our dollars go the other way. I also completely agree in the importance of placemaking and community identity in its, in terms of how it will attract and retain millennials. That's very, very important to that generation and I appreciate the ability to lend support or lend my voice to support the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jenny. Our next speaker is Alex McConaughey. And Alex, if you give us your address, please.
Well, actually, I'm closing on a house in two weeks on North 9th Street.
Excellent.
So I think I'll be in the 3rd Ward. So that's, I didn't put an address down because I'm not technically there yet, but I'm excited about it. I'm really excited about this. Nothing focuses your mind on your home values as much as purchasing your first house. And it's terrifying, but this is really exciting, the prospect of having that home value increase. I have six nieces and nephews and every time they're visiting, we end up traveling around, especially when the weather's cold, looking for children's museums, going to the Discovery Center. There's things to do in DeKalb, but it's a real draw. Every time I've been onto a family wedding or funeral or other trip, we end up at a children's museum. Anything that involves learning and teaching, we end up bringing them there. So the, the prospect of having people come from all over the place and coming to DeKalb is exciting to me. It's exciting that my kids would be able to go there and get educated. Also, I think over half, probably the majority of younger people I know, most of my friends, are always doing crafting things, looking for maker spaces, interested in STEM and STEAM learning, looking for people to swap skills and training and resources with. And frequently, they have to look for places other, in other locations. And they'd all prefer to stay around DeKalb. So keeping it really short, but those are the, the two basics. The, the idea is, is amazing to me and I'm excited about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alex. And congratulations on that new home.
Two weeks.
Okay. Our next speaker is Ann Kaplan.
I'm Ann Kaplan. I'm the Vice President for Outreach Engagement and Regional Development at NIU. I live in Sycamore, but I work in DeKalb. I've lived in DeKalb at two different addresses in the past. I'm here because the P-20 Center and most of our STEM STEAM activities are part of my division, but I'm also representing Acting President Lisa Freeman, who is double or perhaps triple booked tonight and who has a letter in your packet, which I will not repeat. I've been here long enough in the, in the city and at the university to, to know that I think the collaboration between the city and the university is about as good right now as it's ever been. I think you probably know the longstanding collaboration between CGS and the city on economic development strategies and perhaps more relevant to this project, their statewide work on the role of the creative economy and stimulating job growth and building vibrant communities. We've been an active, and we are continuing to be an active participant in your studies about Annie Glidden North and of course, the STEAM Learning Center, which is important to the university, both in terms of it providing a downtown anchor along with the Egyptian and the public library and the potential to bring visitors downtown and to build the pipeline in the STEM professions and local leadership. As it happens, I've just come back from a week or so in China where I was hosted by a Chinese organization called the International Universities Innovation Alliance. They took us, us, meaning me and representatives from three other universities, around to several large cities in the province that houses Beijing and Shanghai. And one of the many things that was very surprising to me about China, and heaven knows there were many things, was the fact that we went to a lot of municipal government facilities and all of the ones that we visited had, were associated with museums, which showed both the city's past, and by past, they mean several centuries past, and its present and its future, all in one kind of facility. And I finally asked about that because museums in this country tend to be pretty much about the past. And they said to me that they wanted to show the city's momentum, which it seems to me is fairly relevant to the vision and the mission statement for the STEAM Learning Centers. So I think without question, this facility would be beneficial to NIU. The students' experiences in the community are a major factor in retaining students at the university. The STEAM Learning Center offers opportunities for students to be involved in the planning and the management and to work directly with visiting kids and adults. And so there are many disciplines at the university which, where students would have a fairly direct link to the Learning Center. We do have faculty with interests in the impact of informal STEAM education on the role of, of community life in economic development. We have an interdisciplinary certificate in museum studies. So I think, you know, everyone here is talking about how the Learning Center could enhance the vitality and livability of DeKalb, which of course, makes the city more of a magnet for both students and faculty. Obviously, we agree entirely that you don't start on a project like this without assessing the philanthropic capacity to keep it going. I would say from an NIU perspective, we've already invested in the planning process by supplying program expertise and active participation. And in fact, in what has been a truly difficult budget climate for the last two years, we've still maintained our commitment to STEAM projects, to STEAM camps, STEM REED, opportunities for young adults, to STEM cafes for people of all ages. So I think that the Learning Center would build on that momentum and of course, we still need to know whether it's financially feasible. Having an independent organization assess that seems to us to be an entirely sensible thing to do. So we strongly support that proposal and we are committed to continuing to participate in those activities as they're assigned to partners in the next phase. Thanks.
Thank you, Ann. Our next speaker is Nicole Ledoux. Please state your address, Nicole.
My name's Nicole Ledoux. I live at 584 Bayfield Drive. I believe that's in Ward 1. So I'm also a new-ish mom. I have a one-and-a-half-year-old daughter and fortunately, my husband is willing to stay home with her tonight and feed her while she throws vegetables at him so that I can be here. So I can tell you that there are few indoor recreational activities for toddlers in the winter in DeKalb, having just lived through one. My family has to drive more than 45 minutes to have these kinds of experiences that we could have at a STEAM Learning Center. In fact, a lot of my colleagues at NIU where I work choose to live in the suburbs where more of these opportunities are available and this drains the economy of DeKalb. So I see that the STEAM Learning Center is an opportunity to reclaim some of the revenue that we're losing to other communities as a result of not having the same opportunities in DeKalb that some of the suburbs offer, even though we're sitting right next to a major university. So, so I think this could become a destination for families from the surrounding community. As a former high school teacher, I know that this type of community resource can help DeKalb's elementary schools in particular meet the Illinois recently adopted next-generation science standards, which elementary schools are struggling to, to support because they don't have the science resources at their fingertips. This kind of a community organization can support that effort. And as a professor of geology at NIU and the Director for Earth and Space Science Teacher Licenseur, this center can be a venue for my pre-service teachers to gain experience before they go into student teaching, to volunteer. It's an opportunity, because I research learning in STEM, it's an opportunity for me and my graduate students to do research on learning and compete for million-dollar grants from the National Science Foundation that are given out to informal learning environments. So this is the exact type of opportunity that I want to have as someone who's chosen to live in the same town where I work. As I said, I work at, at NIU and we very intentionally decided to live in DeKalb because we know the, the benefits of living in a small town. Many of my colleagues have chosen to live elsewhere and I, all I can say is that when we are surrounded by farming communities that, that rely on science to both gain public support to, for GMO crops, to support the types of chemicals that we have to treat our, our soil with in order to grow our crops, we're surrounded by science and this would be an opportunity to connect what's around NIU to what's at NI, what's around DeKalb to what's at NIU and really build a bridge between the communities. So I would love to live near working farms, a college campus, a beautiful library, and an exciting STEAM Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Our next speaker is one of our DeKalb firefighters, Todd Stofa. Todd, hi.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Todd Stofa, 15171 Willow Run, DeKalb. A little background, why are we here? The DeKalb firefighters, I should state, I am a captain with the Fire Department, been here 19 years. I am also the chairman of the DeKalb Firefighters Historical Foundation. Back in 2012, we started looking back at our history. There were some questions of some things that had happened in the past, dating back to 150 years, almost. This fire department was founded in 1869. We looked back at some historical events and started to learn a lot about where we had been. There's that old line about to find out where you're going to go, you need to look and see where you've been. That holds true for the fire service. So we started looking into it, wanted to get deeper into it. Our members got together and decided to form the DeKalb Firefighters Historical Foundation. We were pleased to sit down and start talking with the NIU, P-20 and the STEAM partnership. Our initial thought was to start forming a small fire museum here in this community. What was with any museum, as we've already heard, it's hard to maintain that museum once a family has come through. We needed to look at something better, find a way to get families involved in this community and keep them safer. So we sat down at a table, started talking with the STEAM folks and we started to realize we have an opportunity here. One thing we don't have at the Fire Department is the ability to go out to every school any longer and teach our youth, educate. So one of the things the foundation wants, would like to do, and we foresee ourselves doing in the STEAM Center, not only showcase our history with some specific artifacts, is we would have the ability and a facility to really educate our youth, our seniors, all of our community members. Some of the avenues that we already touch on through the Fire Department, as the chiefs will let you know, we work with youth all the way through senior care, safe cooking techniques, CPR programs, fire extinguisher demos, and we teach heavily in dorm safety for NIU. A lot of that stuff has been cut over the years, obviously due to budget. We all know that. This STEAM Center would give us the opportunity to bring those people in and educate them and teach them in a facility. This would be truly a local asset and a treasure to our community, a one-of-a-kind, multifaceted program that we could all be proud of. On a personal note, my family, when we travel around the area, we commonly, as we've already heard, look for things to educate my children, my wife and I's children on. We have visited multiple children's museums across the Midwest. Our latest is we've been trying to find large-scale fire museums. They're hard to come by. But when you find them, they're very educational, they really reach out and touch the youth of the communities. Is there a risk with this? A lot of what we do in the fire service, we call as risk versus reward. We know there's a risk in taking a big step into a program like this, but I think the reward greatly outseeds that. Thank you for your time. We ask you to please continue this discussion and look forward to the next steps.
Thank you, Todd. On behalf of the city council, I want to commend our speakers this evening. Before we turn it over to our city council for questions and, and answers perhaps, I'd like to read a few of the pieces of communication that I have received over the last week regarding this. Somebody said, "You know, you're wasting time if you read emails to the city council." And folks, I just don't think we are. Anybody who has taken the time to make their views known on any topic like this, I feel an obligation as your mayor to at least read those. And I think maybe some of our city councilmen tonight and aldermen will feel similarly and will relay those thoughts. So I have just a few letters. I have taken the liberty of moving some of the, the verbiage around only because some of it is the nicety of, "It's been nice seeing you" or "I appreciate the opportunity to write this," whatever. So let me start with about, I think I have at least a half a dozen letters here, Council. The first one is from Lynn Neely from DeKalb. Lynn is, as you know, one of the members of our Finance Advisory Committee. She writes, "This past Thursday night, the Finance Advisory Committee met to discuss chronic financial difficulties that the city of DeKalb faces now and what can be done to try to begin to reduce them. Among those are badly underfunded pensions for current employees, deteriorating streets, and fire police and street fleets that are old and unreliable. When you talk about fundraising for the STEAM Center, remember to include STEAM staff's pension obligations, STEAM maintenance and updating costs, and all of which could easily have a 40-to-60-year time horizon." And that's signed by Lynn Neely. The next communique was from Bill, Harry Fitzpatrick, 304 Forsyth Lane, writing to the mayor and to Alderman Fanoukian. "I was very disappointed to read this morning that the city staff is again recommending that taxpayer dollars be spent towards a marketing survey. I strongly urge you to reject the spending being proposed as it is another attempt to fleece the citizens of DeKalb of their hard-earned dollars. A STEAM Center, as I have stated in the past, is simply not viable." That's from Harry Fitzpatrick. And by the way, when someone has communicated to me on each and every one of these, I responded to the party and asked their permission to share this information. I think that's only proper. The next one is from Dan Kenny, who you know, chairs our Environmental Commission here in the city of DeKalb and also is the Executive Director of the DeKalb County Community Gardens. Mr. Mayor and Alderman Fanoukian, STEAM Center- "Mr. Mayor and Alderman Fanouken, STEAM Center can play a very valuable role in the downtown revitalization plan. I've long advocated for a downtown center that would offer a family destination. As a retired teacher and someone who has researched community development, I see the STEAM project as a great opportunity for a win-win for DeKalb, NIU, and all of DeKalb County. I'd like to add that I applaud the diligent and comprehensive approach city staff and NIU are taking as they collaboratively move this project forward. Sincerely, Dan Kenny." The next letter is from Mariah Nagy. She writes, "Dear Mayor Smith, as a science educator at the community college level, I have witnessed how early education and science can make a huge impact on the life of a child. The economic development or benefits of having a dedicated STEAM Center in town are endless. The resource will attract individuals to live in DeKalb, a town that shows it is dedicated to educating children and providing them opportunities. Having a dedicated STEAM Center in DeKalb will encourage new hires to choose DeKalb as their home." And that's from Mariah Nagy. The next letter is from Deana Mickelson. "I moved to Sycamore, DeKalb area, about five years ago to start a family. This is something that I would love to see coming out of our taxes. What I love about this town is it is the first place where I feel comfortable and at home. These centers provide a sense of unity in people. Sincerely, Deana Mickelson." A couple more here. This next one is from Melissa Burlingame. "Dear Mayor Smith and Alderman Fanouken, I'm writing to voice my support for developing a STEAM learning center. Not only would this center enhance downtown DeKalb, but it would benefit disadvantaged populations living in DeKalb. Those folks have no ways to get to Naperville, Aurora, or Rockford to explore their interests and to give them encouragement to really explore." That's from Melissa Burlingame. The next email was from Mark Sharvat. "I see that the STEAM study is on the agenda for tonight. $114,000. Really? Can we stop this study madness? I urge a no vote." That's from Mark Sharvat. The next one is from Patty Perkins, 339 Roff Road in DeKalb. "Dear Mayor Smith, I understand that this project is to be brought to the COW tonight. Please recall that when you were running for office, I asked you specifically about this project and the Egyptian Theater. You very clearly said there would be no taxpayer dollars expended in support of either of these projects. I urge you to keep your word. Please stop this in its tracks. This city cannot afford it." Patty Perkins. Next one is from Barry Schrader, lives at Oak Crest. "I would suggest buying the old-car dealership at Locust and Fourth. I would prefer using the old Elks Lodge at First and Lincoln, but there is no parking. That would be a perfect museum for the county." Barry Schrader. And finally, from Jillian King Cargyle, 1204 Stafford Street, DeKalb. "I'm writing to voice my support for the continuation of the feasibility study for the community learning center. Clint and I live on Stafford Street and have two young children. We're always looking for fun ways to help them get excited about learning." And that's from Jillian King Cargyle in DeKalb. So those are just a few of the communications that I did receive and had gotten authorization to share with the city council tonight. Before we turn it over to the city council, Joellen, you want to make a few closing comments, and then we'll turn it over. For those of you who follow COWs and city council meetings, you'll know that we have extended tonight's meeting and have not scheduled our city council meeting until 7:00, so we're right on time. Joellen?
Thank you, Mayor. At the end of the day, I think we wanted to bring this to you to get, to have an opportunity to provide you with the status and where we're at and what we believe the next steps would be to making a responsible decision moving forward with this project. This is at a committee of the whole, so no action will be taken tonight. It was intended to allow everyone an opportunity to voice their comments and questions and concerns and support, and we certainly have had a lot of that tonight. So hopefully, this is a good opportunity to give you that chance to hear all perspectives and think of any questions that you might have. This will be on an agenda at the next council meeting for formal consideration. So what we're asking in terms of feedback from the council tonight is whether there's anything that you need city staff or the consultant team to follow up on to help you make an informed decision. Again, certainly we heard both sides of the story, as we would expect. There are obviously a lot of concerns about spending this amount of money or any amount of money on a project in our community, and it's only responsible that we continue to evaluate. We do have limited resources, so we want to make sure that we're spending those dollars wisely and on projects that can truly be transformative. One of the things I know I've talked to several of you about is that it's very easy to look at projects that are for private investment, and Jason has trained us really well to look at the return on investment and to understand when a private development project is providing real estate taxes or sales taxes. It's not quite so easy when we have a not-for-profit project coming before us and to measure those benefits that come from adding population and employment and visitors. What I heard tonight from some of the people that were speaking was a couple of additional elements I want to draw attention to that we really haven't paid much attention to recently, and that's workforce development. One of the things that we've learned in working with our partners at the state, as we've been talking about new projects coming to DeKalb, they're, as you all know, working with various entities on attracting out-of-state, out-of-country businesses to come to our community. One of the topics that always comes up is workforce development, and the STEAM learning center is uniquely situated to be able to help us capitalize on that. The Center for Governmental Studies and the P-20 and Northern Illinois University all provide key services that help us promote that in the community, but we haven't been able to really do a good job driving that factor home. The STEAM learning center would be a great opportunity to continue that, mostly because we would have opportunities for our faculty and our students, both K through 12, as well as our NIU students, to have those opportunities to work in the STEAM learning center and create that workforce development component. One of the other things I heard tonight, which I've also heard from the council as being important, is we're looking for opportunities in the community to help support people's choice to continue to live in the community. I know we've looked at a lot of past studies on how employers will have employees in the community, NIU is one of them. Some do choose to live in our community, and that's what we want to support. Others do move to other locations outside of the community, either close by in Sycamore or other DeKalb County areas, or many do travel to the western suburbs, again, to have a lot of those opportunities. And we heard from one individual tonight, and I think that speaks volumes, that we need to have something in DeKalb that keeps and attracts and draws people to the community. So with that, I'm really interested to hear the council's questions or comments. I know our team from RACIO can also respond to any specific questions or comments that you might have as well.
Okay. Thank you, Joellen. We'll open it up to our city council. Who'd like to start? Alderman Fagan?
Wonder Lab keeps coming up. And what did the city of Bloomington do to get Wonder Lab going? And I don't need, you know, the whole thing, but I mean, we're talking about money.
Right. Wonder Lab was an organization going back into the 1990s. The physical, the new building that it's in was built in 2003. The city bought, acquired the real estate. It was, I believe, an old industrial site. They remediate, cleared the site, remediated the site, and provided the land, in this case, for the building to go on. But they did not fund the building or the, don't have any operating costs, as I understand it.
Well, here with the letter from the mayor of Bloomington, on the fourth point here, it says, "Wonder Lab relies on existing student facility talent from Indiana for its success." It goes on to say that provides staff with significant support in marketing, management, administration, and its day-to-day operation program. Now, I, looking at this and saying, okay, Bloomington gave Wonder Lab their land, and then they said...
You're on your own.
You're on your own.
More or less. I mean, they help out, I think, with festivals or fairs, that kind of thing on the outside.
And I think what really what it comes down to is the concern on where we're at and our financial responsibilities, and we've got coming down the road.
Sure.
We're being saddlebagged with another yearly payout of support.
Sure.
And you have to understand, this is why the people of town come in and say, you know, enough's enough. But of course, you know, I would love to see something like this. I don't see NIU coming up, yeah, they'll give us support, but I don't see NIU saying, okay, we'll take it over. You buy the land, we'll take it over.
Indiana University isn't involved in the operation of the direct, they're providing students and some faculty to assist with the operation. So there are students, as I understand it, there are kind of two types of student interns that work at the Wonder Lab. And just to clarify, there's paid, paid internships, and then there are kind of what I would call unpaid academic internships. So they're getting credit for their work. I think the important thing, and I think the mayor may have touched in the letter, is that it's not all coming out of their science fields. Some are in marketing, business, and, you know, kind of the non-science fields that helped the administrative staff. So there are kind of a, definitely another leg of support for the administrative group that runs the Wonder Lab day-to-day basis. And a very important one, I don't want to minimize it there, they basically said, you know, we really rely on the students. They get about, I think, around 30 a year generally, and there's several faculty that do participate in different programming events from time to time. And that's, how that fits with NIU's STEAM, the difference, I think, is NIU has an ongoing program that you can, you know, build off of. In the case of Indiana University and the Wonder Lab, is they kind of grew together and have kind of formed that relationship over time. They didn't have an existing STEAM, but they now know how they kind of fit together. So...
Thank you.
Alderman Norreco?
Has there been any consideration for NIU providing, say, in-kind contribution towards this project in terms of, for example, assisting with the marketing materials? Bottom line, I'm looking at what are the ways that this $100,000-plus project study, the cost could be scaled down somewhat?
Good question. Thank you. We've, NIU has said since the beginning that it would contribute the programming expertise from the P-20 Center, specifically the NIU STEAM folks, and we have served on the planning with the work group. Beyond that, the university is not funding other parts of the project. Our marketing money needs to go to recruit students, and that's what's going to happen.
Okay. Well, you know, I asked the question, and has there been consideration for seeking funds for this study from some other entities, DCE, DC, the city of Sycamore, Community Foundation? Because this has also been presented to us as a regional center. So potentially, since other areas would benefit, can they contribute?
I don't believe that's anything that we have considered at this point. It doesn't mean that we couldn't reach out to other partners. Again, I kind of go back to, yes, it's a lot of money, but in the realm of a large project, it's a reasonable cost. It's a standard cost that we see applied to these types of projects. And this type of marketing material is, as our consultants indicated, is what's necessary to really promote the project and to secure the type of commitments from the donors that we would need to do. So if the council would like us to evaluate that, that's something we can certainly consider if that's the consensus of the group.
You know, my other question, can I just jump in here before we get to the next question? Joel, I'm going to ask if Marilyn Ballard can come back to the podium. I think it would be beneficial for Marilyn to elaborate in more detail as to what she meant by staff support, and I know the answer to that question because we've had that discussion in our working group, but I think if you can elaborate for the council and the community as to what does that NIU staff support mean?
Staff support related to program. We are not financial experts or marketing experts in the P-20 Center. We do develop and deliver STEAM programming, science, technology, engineering, arts, mathematics, sometimes integrated, sometimes individually, but we have helped to plan what the programming will be at the STEAM learning center. We have Patty Severt, wave Patty, who you have heard from before, attends national meetings for children's science museums and other science museums. All of us have done a lot of visiting around the country anytime we could to see what's happening in other places, and we have brought that expertise to the meetings of the working group. So we've talked a lot about programming, a lot about what the center might look like, about the importance of having it serve a whole continuum of the population. We saw a couple of mothers of babies and toddlers this evening, early childhood programs, and adult programs at the other end. So a place for teens to go. We've thought about programming along that whole continuum and have contributed those ideas. So one of the functions, one of the things that will happen in this next phase, Phase 2A, is to determine what the programming is going to be. You can't take a presentation out to a big corporate donor and not be able to tell them exactly what's going to go on there. So we will be winnowing through our own experience and that of the other folks who are working on this. We've had a wonderful time with Todd and the firefighters because of the technology and the science in firefighting and the history. So we have been working to bring all of those concepts together, including history of the city. This city has a very powerful history in the STEAM principles and a powerful future as well. Now, I don't know if I read your mind, but is that what you were thinking?
Yes, and I didn't know if there was anything else to add as to what does NIU's P-20 engagement bring to the table? What does this mean as far as, you've talked about programming, how does your P-20 engagement of what you do at NIU, how would that tie into the STEAM learning center?
Well, yes, it's very foundational. Last year, and in the last 12 months, the STEAM learning center staff interacted with 54,000 people of all ages, kids of all ages. That includes the 8,000 who came to STEM Fest. And by the way, the next STEM Fest is October 21st, Saturday, week from Saturday. Please do come. It's a fabulous day. But we deliver programming in upwards of 200 schools all over the area. Jeremy and Sam, wave your hands. These guys and their crew of students pack up vans full of hands-on activities and drive all over everywhere with them. I don't know how many sets of tires you guys have worn out from the motor pool, but they go out with students and they do family science nights, and they do presentations for kids. They do teacher education. Some of our other staff does a lot of professional development of teachers. It's all over the place. Huge amount of travel time. If we could centralize those activities more at the STEAM learning center, well, we like to think of it as STEM Fest every day, all year round. The hands-on activities would be there for the community, but we would also expect buses of kids from schools all over the area coming to the STEAM learning center. Everything that we go out and teach is based on the next-generation science standards, the English standards, and the math standards. So teachers are very concerned with how they are going to get kids, for instance, to learn the engineering design cycle. Where's the average elementary teacher going to learn about the engineering design cycle, which has to be part of what their kids are able to understand? They don't know. So those are the kinds of things that we teach. We bring to the campus literally hundreds... We bring to the campus literally hundreds of busloads of kids every year. They're coming to NIU, they visit the engineering labs, they visit the STEM learning, the STEM classroom. They get hands-on activity all day long. They get on a college campus, they, they start to get a sense of what going to college is like. We will expect them to still want to be on campus, but the STEM, the STEAM Learning Center would be the real draw for them and for the NIU students. So we have one of the largest STEAM outreach programs in the country. It's a very rich and diverse program. We are a little over half externally funded and working hard to increase that. We hope to be 75% externally funded, but those people who will pay us to drive way into Lake County, we had people in Collinsville, which is down by St. Louis, just two weeks ago. So, you know, that kind of transportation, we could stop driving around and spend more time teaching kids here. So we bring people to DeKalb, we would, we expect them to come to the STEAM Learning Center. And I think Matt has made the case very persuasively before that that kind of foundation of programming, moving into the STEAM Learning Center, would give it a good foundation for success. Okay?
Thank you.
Alderman, yeah, let's, let's, you can have a question later here, Kate. Mike Verbic, Alderman Verbic.
Yeah, for Ms. Bellart, certainly we know the top priority is attracting and retaining students at NIU, attracting enrollment. You mentioned investments in marketing as being that top priority to attracting enrollment. Do you not consider the STEAM Center to be a catalyst in attracting and retaining students at NIU?
Oh, we think it would be a factor, but the, the immediate attention has got to be on high school students and getting them to NIU. Right now, things are so tight and so difficult that diverting money for any purpose is problematic. I would make that case, if you'll come with me, we'll go do it together. But I don't see it happening right now, not with the drastic constraints the university's under.
Thank you.
So it's very short-term, but that's where we are.
Mayor, I'm sorry, can I, I just respond to that as well?
Sure.
If we were having a conversation about this project and it wasn't in a TIF, I think we'd have a, be having a completely different conversation. The whole group has been extremely collaborative in working together to put all of these moving pieces together, to take something that is already working within the community, that's successful, and trying to responsibly move it forward, kind of step by step, to make sure it's something that's going to work. We've heard loud and clear from the council that the primary expenditure, the seed money, needs to be limited, that the ongoing function of the facility needs to be self-sustaining, and we have a lot of resources coming our way. The fact of the matter is, is we have a TIF. TIFs are designed to help you stimulate investment. I know it's, you know, people don't like to hear that it's not the same taxpayer dollars because it's, it's all coming from taxes. But the purpose of a TIF is really to stimulate reinvestment in an area. So to take money and apply it towards the responsible evaluation of whether or not we can actually get the funding necessary is a really important step. This isn't a go-no-go STEAM project. This is going to get us to a go-no-go decision. So we really are just hoping to move this part of the project forward so you can make an informed decision about whether there is enough funding capacity to make this project feasible in the long run.
Thank you, Joellen. Alderman Fanouken.
Just a couple of quick things. You know, I believe in the concept, I've been clear in that from the beginning. But as other folks have stated, I'm concerned about the, the number of dollars that might be required from the city upfront. And again, there's no guarantee at this point about ongoing financial support. However, having said that, I think we still need to go ahead and do this study to know really where we're going to be at, if it's something that we can move forward. As our consultants have said, that if they determine that it's not fiscally responsible to go ahead, they're going to tell us that. So I think that's where I would lie on this, is to go ahead and at least go into this next step, limiting that expenditure to the amount in the report. And just as a follow-up question, if I could, Joellen, you know, it wasn't very clear. I mean, they talked a lot in the letter from Bloomington what the impact has been there. Have we done any kind of a best estimate on what we can anticipate in terms of economic impact on the city of DeKalb? Not just downtown, but citywide?
We have not done that kind of an estimate. We have some anecdotal evidence of various other types of projects and the impact that they have on, on a community. I don't know if that's something any of our economic, if you have Matt any kind of data on that. It would be something that would be an estimate and pretty hard to measure.
Maybe we could have some numbers when we go to vote on it next week or in two weeks. Thank you.
Alderman Fager.
So I'll, I'll condense all my comments because we are running short on time. But I was going, I'm in support of a STEAM Center or a STEM Center. So even saying those two different terms leads me to think that why is the city the one spearheading this operation? Why are we not, you know, trying to raise that 501(c)(3) and letting them go ahead and define the vision and the mission for the STEAM Center? Why is it the city that is spearheading this? And that's primarily the feedback I get, is why is it the city, you know, we're expending a lot of time, energy expense on this. I'm very much in favor of, you know, the, the one-time gift of, of three to four million dollars of a, a lot in downtown DeKalb that's been remediated and ready to go, and then take our hands off it. Because I don't want, I don't want the future expenses, I don't want the responsibility. You know, one, that, the question that Alderman Fagan asked is, is the same one I had, is, you know, how much involvement did Bloomington have? And you answered it, they weren't involved. It was already an existing organization that came forward looking to expand and develop within the city. To me, I think we have the horse in front of the cart, or the cart in front of the horse, in that we're, we're pushing this forward, hoping someone will come forward, or we're going to appoint some people to come forward as a 501(c)(3) and take over this, when organically it should be, you know, a 3M or a PANDUET, or if we had DeKalb Genetics here still, you know, they would have kicked this off and started this. In terms of, I, I think it's, mixing metaphors again, chicken and egg. We're looking at, you know, in, in our study, we're going to go out and find corporate sponsors. Well, if I was going to be a corporate corporation wanting to donate to a STEAM Center or a STEM Center, you know, I'd want to know, again, where is it located? We've talked about all this. Who's going to be running it? Because we don't have that information. What if, what if the 501(c)(3) is, you know, really heavily into the fire museum? And they, they're much more less into industrial? Or what if they're completely on arts and not really so much on science, technology and math? To me, if you had a 501(c)(3) that was here asking us for the money, we could make a much, a much better decision. But I think the city being the one spearheading it is, is not something I can support.
Before I toss it over to Alderman Jacobsen, you know, your cart before the horse story analogy, Tony, I think it would probably beg a question, is it possible to have donors at this point of the game, at this stage of the game, to raise the $114,000? Just have someone else pick up that expense to, to, to front, front us, if you will, and front the city? Because that particular corporation, that particular donor or set of donors has the wherewithal and the confidence that this is a project that would in fact benefit the city of DeKalb? So I don't, I don't know if that's sort of a.
No, I would agree. And, and so, you know, we've had, so I kept score. We had 13 people speak for, we had seven people speak against. Not a single person said, I'm willing to put my own money behind this. I would love to see, like you said, again, a little organic support for this project, a little cash coming forward, that there is financial interest in the community to put this thing forward besides city and taxpayer dollars.
Thank you. Alderman Jacobsen.
I think that's what's frustrating about this discussion is I don't think any of us are against the idea of a STEAM or a STEM Center. I think that's, it's putting us in a very awkward position in terms of the theoretical idea of a STEAM Center or STEM Center downtown. I think all of us would support it. I think many residents, probably the vast majority of residents would say, yeah, that would be a nice amenity to have downtown. Where it gets a little murky and where it gets a little complicated, I think for many of us and many of the residents, is again, the issue that if we were acting as a catalyst and using TIF money appropriately, it would be in the go-or-no-go stage. It wouldn't be to feel around in the dark for a project. And that's why I, I think it's a very inappropriate use of TIF funds to, to guess and to see if maybe somebody will come to the table and to see if maybe the residents will support it and to see if maybe, those are the things in terms of a project coming to city council, if we weren't the ones spearheading it, that would have already likely been answered by now. And again, we've asked, we've asked, we've asked, we, we've had several meetings on this. There's been multiple newspaper articles, there's been radio discussion, there's been online discussion of it all over the blogs. And yet, no one has come forward to say, yes, let's form a group, let's do the work together, let's be the community effort. There are several people that think it's a good idea. There's people even saying, hey, we might be able to support this thing if and when it's built. But nobody is coming together in the community to say, we want this, we want to do this, we want to take the lead on this so it's falling to the city, which again, I don't feel is appropriate. In terms of the comments that are coming from NIU, again, I appreciate the fact that revenues are tight and that you have to focus on your core mission, so do we. That's our responsibility, our revenues are tight, we have to focus on our core mission. I don't, I think this falls outside of it. Again, if it was the ask saying, here's the ready-to-go package, we have the donors identified, we have a site identified, here's the costs, can the city support us? I, I think that's a very simple vote, I think that's a very quick conversation. I think they get their yeses very quickly in that, in that scenario. At this point, I, again, I don't think we should keep throwing good money after bad in hope someone comes to the table. If they want to step up, we're here to support it. Until that point, I, I couldn't get on board doing so.
Mayor, can I, can I address Alderman Jacobsen's comments? I know Patty is also standing. A little background and may, all of you may not know this, or just as a reminder to the community, during the America's Best Communities competition, which has now transitioned into proudly, hashtag proudly DeKalb, a group of, so I would say roughly 10 to 12 individuals met pretty regularly every week, sometimes more than once a week for approximately about a year and a half, give or take. It might have been longer, it might have been shorter. One of the seven projects that was identified by a group of community volunteers, and yes, if asked, the city was involved in that, we did have city staff involved, but this was coming from the grassroots of those people that were involved in that group. This was one of the seven projects that that community-based group submitted to Frontiers America's Best Communities Competition. As you may recall, we started among several hundred communities, it was narrowed down to 15. We made it to the final 15, we didn't make it to the, to the end. But this was one of the seven projects, if they had received grant funding, they would have dedicated their time. So I know many of those people weren't here tonight, couldn't be here, that spent countless hours brainstorming on this one particular project. So I know there's interest among some people, whether it's going to the level of what, what, you know, Alderman Fager and others have talked about. But I just want to remind you that there was that community support, otherwise this wouldn't have gone forward. They spent much time looking at what those seven projects and started with many more projects and narrowed it down to those seven. The only other thing I would add, just to talk about, I want to build on what Director Charlton had said earlier. If you look at, at the TIF district and if you look at, you're very familiar now as the council on what I would call the private development incentives that you've seen, whether it's Cornerstone, SunDog IT, Plaza DeKalb, where you have a potential developer comes to you with the concept and is asking for an incentive. Basically, they're asking for that incentive of the gap between what is it that makes their project a reality? From, it's the gap in financing that if but for that incentive, that project is not going forward. So if you think about how you're familiar with that, the difference in the STEAM Learning Center, as set up basically as a nonprofit, is that, to use Joan, Director Charlton's term, you'd be using seed, seed money on the front end. So there's no difference in the benefit that that can have in economic development. The thing I would challenge you and question you to think about is if not STEAM, if you choose ultimately not to go forward with STEAM, what will be the placemaking area in the downtown? What is going to be your vision to attract people to downtown? Because you now have these private developments where we're trying to attract really the millennial generation and tie into the benefit of, of the students that we have at NIU. So if you don't go forward with the STEAM Learning Center, what is the placemaking entity that's going to draw people to downtown? When you think of other downtowns that you go to that are in the regional area, you go there, whether it's for restaurants or food or entertainment or theater, or there's some reason that attracts you to that downtown. So I'm always going to challenge you as the council that, to have that 20-year vision of what do you want the community in the downtown to look like 20 years from now? So if not this, what? Because you have the opportunity with the TIF district to provide that incentive to make it happen. So, thank you, and I think Patty Severt, looks like you have a comment.
I want to thank the, the council mayor for, for your support of the concept. I really appreciate that and I, I am really thankful of that. And I guess what I, I want to follow up with what Anne Marie said in that this is a placemaking project. And it was originally in the city plan many, many years ago when I first got involved at all with the city for it to become anything more than just a kernel of an idea in the minds of a few of my friends. There was a city visioning meeting up at, up in the upper level of O'Leary's where one of the things that was shown was, oh, let's have a children's museum or something else along those lines. And so one of the reasons that we, NIU and the city are working together was because the city saw it as a placemaking opportunity. If we wait, if you let this opportunity go and say, we need to have a 501(c)(3) first, and I can understand that, I can understand the concern. But if we wait for that, are we outside the window of opportunity with TIF funding? Possibly, I don't know enough about TIF to know, but I'm seeing a nod here. Are we also then opening it up to the agenda of who else comes on board and says, hey, this is a really great idea, but why are we doing it downtown DeKalb? Why don't we do it on the strip between DeKalb and Sycamore? Why don't we do it in Sycamore? Why don't we do it on the west end of the campus? And so there's, if you let go of it, you let go of that opportunity to have your input on where. And also, the timeline, I believe, would be very far extended into the future compared to what we could do if we worked together. Thank you. And by the way, I live in Word 4.
Alderman Norreco.
I have one additional question about the construction of the study. Is there any magic to the number of interviewing 35, you know, organizations, individuals and so forth? What I'm looking at is, could the cost of the study be reduced somewhat by reducing that number to 25? Or do you need a certain mass of data to look at?
Thank you for the question. Yes, the 35 number, up to 35, the reason why in this case we want to talk to that many individual prospects is especially because we don't have active donors yet. So part of why we would want to, and sometimes we do studies, honestly, where there's like 60 interviews, if there's a giant, giant university and they want us to speak to a representative from every single segment. But in this particular case, if we do 35, that will give us a broad enough base to be able to look at the three segments, but also give us enough conversations and enough answers that we can say, "Yes, we think..." When you get to that number of 35, it's not, there's the individual answers you're getting, but you also start getting enough answers that you can extrapolate general projections on a group. And if you do too small of a sample, you can reduce the cost that way, but then you're not, it'd be much harder to apply that to a broader, a broader constituency, because it's just too, it gets to be too small, it's just one-on-one. So that's why we recommend this study, since we really do want to test several different areas to be able to identify as much capacity and interest as possible, we wanted to talk to that number.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Alderman Fagan.
So, I was just going to say two things real quick. One is, are we going to be outside of the TIF window? Potentially, but I think the city could also potentially own property that could be gifted to a, to a STEAM Center. And what will we look at in 20 years in terms of placemaking? The library is still here, the Egyptian Theater is still here, we're making investments downtown right now that will hopefully create a corridor to NIU that will potentially have developments along Antiglitten and in that area. So I'm not concerned that this is the only thing that we have to do to make sure that we have placemaking in downtown DeKalb. And I'd rather not spend the money on TIF, and, and instead of spending all the money on TIF and having something that fails. So to me, just because we have money on TIF doesn't mean we have to spend it, but we also have 28-plus projects that are, you know, vying for TIF dollars as well. So I'm pretty sure we're going to be able to invest that money wisely. This is just one of those things to look at. If it doesn't, if the timing doesn't happen, it, it doesn't happen. It wasn't meant to be. It wasn't, you know, ordained that, that this would happen. So I, I'm not concerned that we're not going to have placemaking, I'm not concerned that we're going to miss the TIF window. I think we'll do okay. Thanks.
You know, I, it's taken me this long to figure out something, and that is this. And to Alderman Fagan's comments and to yours, Alderman Jacobson, I sense that the concept of STEAM makes sense to this city council. And I know timing is of the essence, however, I find it very difficult to imagine that we can't raise private dollars to utilize and to pay for what we're being asked to move forward on in this instance. Because if we find that, what have we done? We have found substantive support to the tune of $114,000 or thereabouts. It will then give us, without spending our tax dollars, it will give us the ability to then move forward to see if in fact this makes sense. Because what I hear is that $114,000 price tag will in fact give us a pretty good roadmap on whether or not this entire concept makes sense for the city of DeKalb. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So that is, in a nutshell, what I have heard and what I am hearing and what I would hope we might be able to do. You know, I was in sales for a number of years before I got into this gig. And sometimes you simply have to make the ask. You simply have to state the case, for in this case, assisting the city of DeKalb. Are we strapped, Alderman Fagan?
We are.
Of course we are. You've told me that, even though I can't hear correctly what you're saying all the time. I do in fact hear you, and I hear other taxpayers, I hear this council. So we are running out of time, I haven't seen any more hands. We are going to start the city council meeting shortly after 7:00. Let me finish, Kate, if I may. On this committee of the whole agenda, we have a update scheduled on the Antiglitten-North Revitalization Plan, which, talking about dollars, is important to us, important to the university. David and Bill, if we move this report from the COW into the city council meeting, are you going to be able to do what it is that you would hope to do?
Yeah.
Good.
It's on both agendas, so we'll be fine.
Yes, it is on both agendas, right. That's why, that was my caveat there that I saw. Okay, before we adjourn the meeting-
Do we have to formally remove that from this agenda, or no?
No, you would just not address it as this agenda.
What, what is that, Dean?
You would just not address it at this time, Mayor.
Right, we don't have to address it at that, at this time. However, the Antiglitten-North Revitalization Plan Task Force update is in fact on the city council agenda, and we'll ask Alderman Jacobson and Alderman Fanucan to, to make that report. Now, before we adjourn, Kate, I know you had one more point.
I was going to ask about this issue, so-
Yeah, and I just wanted to make sure that Alderman Jacobson-
Mayor took care of it. I was asking if we were going to have time to do-
Yeah, yeah, okay. Alderman Markwart.
I guess I'm slow to formulate my thoughts on this to a certain extent. From my time in DeKalb, I have seen where, as a city, we have shot ourselves in the foot so many times by not going all the way on certain things. We have limited our availability to have employment for citizens. We have abdicated that to other cities in our region. We have done our best to embrace the negativity that is in our community. One of the things that I see in this project is an opportunity to say to the world, because it's a world thing that we travel in, is to say to the world that, "Hey, by the way, barbed wire started here, by the way, we did this, and by the way, this is what we're doing now." And I don't know many businesses that are going to turn away 54,000 visitors, if that's a good number. That's a heck of a lot of people coming to your city. Doesn't have to be downtown, you can put it on Sycamore Road, you can put it someplace. But 54,000 people coming to your city, some of them are going to stay in hotels, some of them are going to have to eat. You know, you can't take a teenager anyplace without feeding them. So I don't want us to shortchange ourselves by not actually looking at this opportunity. And yes, it's a matter of philosophy, does the city do something that, and help a project along a little bit? That's what we've been doing, you know, with all these other TIF things, throughout the decades that it's been around, is attempting to do those things. And so we need to look at this as another one of those ways. And if we can make one more reason why somebody wants to stay in our community, or in the surrounding 15 miles and live here, yes, because in the next 20 years, they're going to spend money in this community. They're going to need to buy cars, they're going to need to buy this and buy that. And it is a way to combat all the other negative things that are going on in our community, because we need to take it back, and this is a way to do that. So I would support it.
Alderman Markwart, you have the final word at the Committee of the Hall.
So Mayor, I, I need to jump in here because I need to know direction from the council and, and the community members that are here tonight. It was our initial intent, and I might be jumping ahead of Director Charlton, it was our initial intent to bring this back to you for your action one way or the other at the next meeting. Should we still do that? Because if not, I need consensus from the council not to do that. And I'm hearing differing opinions for and against the proposal, and I think if you're for it, then you would support it at the next meeting. If you're against it, then you're going to provide us with direction as to how to proceed. Is that the correct assessment? I think we need to, we need to know as staff how to handle this, and I think the community wants to know what, what's the next step.
Alderman Fagan.
You know, I love the concept, but I don't want the city on the ownership. If you can get somebody in here, like Alderman Fagan said, to take the ownership of it, we're not here to, we're not in a position, I've got NIU here saying, "Yeah, but look, our first is getting students, our first is getting what we need to have done in the city of DeKalb before this." If somebody, if somebody came in and took ownership of this, and then came to us for TIF money, we'd be talking about a total different thing.
When you mean ownership, do you mean, because I can hear that in two ways. Number one, to be clear, the city would not own the building, this would be a, a 501(c)(3), so this is going to be a nonprofit that would run it. Are you referring to that, or-
I'm just, yeah, I am. That's why I brought up about the question about Bloomington, about Wonderlab, where they came along and they said, "Okay, here's your property." And then they, then they were done, because we can't take on any more liability. We have another recession that comes along like, like we do. That's why I'm saying it.
The city, the city would not own it. And I think the, the important clarification, and if you look at what Phase 2 originally was going to be and what it was revised to do, is to look at strictly at the fundraising issue because of the concerns that the council raised at the last meeting. So assuming you, you approved that and said, "Yes, let's look to see if the fundraising is there to support this institution, this STEAM Learning Center." So let's just assume for sake of argument, the council approves that, and then the analysis comes back and says, "Yes, there's sufficient, we can get these corporate donors along the I-88 corridor, they want to have their name associated with it, they want to sponsor the building, they want to sponsor this exhibit." That separate 501(c)(3) is going to be the entity that will own the building, that will run the operations. So the city provides the seed money, to use the comparison of, of the facility of Wonderlab in, in Indiana, the city provides the seed money either to purchase the building, to donate the land, to donate the building, or to do whatever it is on the, the first stage, or just to give a flat amount to that entity to go forward, but the city would not own it.
And I understand that. You're asking us on how we feel about direction on this. Right now, I'm a no, because like Jerry said, you know, if somebody came in and threw in some money on this, 114,000, 140, whatever, then we've got some ownership. Thank you.
Alderman Verbic.
And I would echo that sentiment, but certainly for me, how cool would it be, we, the city owns the vacant lot on Fourth and Lincoln Highway, there's two state highways, to locate a STEAM Center there would be a great location, great exposure. So I for one, like Alderman Fagan said, I'm very comfortable donating that kind of property toward this effort, but certainly looking for some upfront investment in this cost to get it going, because, to echo what others have already said, if you have that confidence upfront, as I heard, we have not had any donors to date, is that correct? And we've been discussing this for over a year, that that will give me the confidence that, that the dollars are out there.
Is the upfront donation that you talk about, 114,000 or thereabouts?
Or partnered in, like Alderman Noriega had suggested, maybe other entities are willing to, to join in.
I, I just think to try to answer your question, Anne Marie, is, are we going to, are we ready to vote on October 23? I don't think so, not from what I hear tonight. I don't think we're ready to vote on the, the study, or moving forward with the plan to see what the, the long-term feasibility of this project is. I think we may be, I think what I would urge us to do is to see what it's going to take to try to raise the dollars, the short-term dollars, if you will, to get this thing in a position where this city council would vote in the affirmative. Does that, is, is that what I hear? Alderman Jacobson first.
Again, I, I'm struggling to understand why we have to take the, the lead. If we, we've continually asked through this process for months for somebody to step forward, assuming we were a community that didn't have any groups to do so, and it needed to start from scratch, I can see why that, that's a daunting task. We have renewed DeKalb, we have proudly DeKalb, we have a CVB, we have all those things communities of not our size don't have, and, and none of them are showing up to the table to take this thing out. I appreciate that as part of the grant proposal, it was an idea they had, where are they? Why aren't they here? Why haven't they championed this idea? Again, they have the full-time staff, they have the volunteer base, they have a donor base, they have all of those things in the local community to do the seed funding. And to say that, that the effect is effectively the same to invest in a project as an investment for the city on behalf of the taxpayers, and to gamble with their money as seed funding on a totally unproven, unjustified plan with no support showing up to back it up, I, I think is unfair. Again, you can invest in betting on football teams, I would tell you, your investment manager would probably remind you, "That's not an investment, it's a gamble." I, I don't think we should be gambling with taxpayers' money. I don't think that's what we, we were elected to set up here and do.
Alderman Noriega.
I would just want to point out to Alderman Jacobson that I'm not convinced that some of these other entities have been asked, you know, have been asked as directly as the mayor is proposing. In other words, you know, the true sales pitch, we're getting to the point that it's going to have to be a yes or no decision on STEAM Center, we need to have data, part of getting that data is funding a study. What can you contribute for that study? And sure, we might, you know, at council meetings, we've said we'd like people to come forward who support the project, but that's very different than in effect putting someone's back to the wall and saying, "What are you putting out here?" And I think we're at the stage of saying, "Open your pockets, or wallets, or whatever, or write a check, or Bitcoin, or, you know, we don't care how you give it to us, just, you know."
Hearing no further discussion, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn the Committee of the Hall.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Before we move on the adjournment, we will start the city council meeting at promptly 7:20. 7:20. Thank you very much for everybody. We are adjourned.
It's a nice break, yeah.